... selectmen be into order for Thursday, February 6th. All three selectmen present. The secretary is going to be doing it via tape and audio and recording. Administrator is present. For the citizens of Dunbar, Mr. Lee, my child. Thank you. Okay. Jim, three sets of minutes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the 7:00 PM regular minutes of January 30th as amended.
I'll second Bob's motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
No debate on that. I'll make a motion to approve the 8:59 non-public meeting minutes from January 30th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve the 9:21 PM non-public minutes, January 30th.
I'll second Bob's motion. Any discussion here and not all in favor?
Aye.
All the minutes have been approved, Jim? I'm going over for public comment. I'm going to start with the last row.
All right.
Okay. Sir, chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know we're having trouble with our base radio station, the police station thing.
Okay.
We had a service call today and technician checked it out. The good news is it's not the radio. The bad news is it could be the antenna.
Okay.
Cable leading to the antenna, which is in the radio tower behind the fire station, which could end up being a kind of costly repair. We need to hear from now on.
Okay.
Radio shop, you know what the options are.
So that's in your maintenance line for that car?
Yeah. Yeah. Just swing it on.
Okay, thank you. Where do you go? Make sure.
No.
Good evening. Chief, anything?
All set.
All set. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. I'm going to start off, we have an agenda item for donations, Jim. We have a motion on the table. We've got a motion, make a motion to accept a donation per RSA 31,95, dash B, Roman normal three, paragraph B, to accept a donation of $10 for fundraising for Riza Cross Dunbar. Second. Do you have the $10, Lynn? Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
That's going to be a permanent agenda item, I think, from your line. Okay. I've got about nine minutes before the public hearing, so I'm going to go through some general business to save time from our end blocks. Okay, first of all, we have an update from, Woody, thank you, Woody, for the update. Thumbs up. It's just that towns just went on a transportation. It's good information. And also, one of the things he alluded to was the solar panels. We have an update from Mike coming in to the inspector. I think that the switch is going to go on soon, but there's a few little things they have to finish up, but they're at that final stage. I would say 99% ready to go. It's good information on that one. We're in a butter to, Dave, the year obviously doing a subdivision. We just had notification, the town is in a butter. Thank you. We go on for playing word on that, I think. Okay. Just quickly, there was an issue with the gates. They're looking good, but there was an issue how we're going to slide the gates at the transfer station. And so we had to modify the implementation of how we were sliding gates because it's no, when you slide one open, there's no resting spot for the gate to be slid open. And the issue was that we could put one gate on there, it opened half of it, but you have to have access to the dumpster on both sides so it can be crushed down and so we facilitate good use of the back hole gate and compacting the trash down. And while you had only one gate and we couldn't get that done. So Dave and Woody did some work with the adjustment and all, we did the original contract on that. He gave an adjustment to make it available. So we have two available openings to get to the dumpsters, so I have two dumpsters. All three? All three. I stand for three, yeah. So Jim, do you have any, Bob, did you get a chance to look at this quote?
Yeah. I only quite saw it at home, actually.
Okay. The other question is, do we, this could be out of our maintenance line. And so we can get a motion to accept the quote, it's at $5,000. And that's what, I hate to say, gates are expensive. Fancying is cheap. And so we can either accept this and continue on, and I think we should.
I'll let you guys do it, because Justin's my nephew and he owns GN Fencing.
Okay.
But I will say, I went down there and the only, the only way I could see to do it, because they wanted to be rolling gates so that they could slide them in front of each other and not swing out into the public, especially as we just had a gate hit down there when they swung out.
Right. And that was one of our concerns, though. We didn't want any swing outs. We wanted it to be rolling. And Bob, do you have any further discussion?
It's doubling all the rollers on the whole system and doubling the amount of gates, which is where all the expense is.
Well, if you want to, it's between me and you, I have no issue with raising that amount of money out of our maintenance line. I like a commotion that we amend our contract to increase by $5,000 to...
So you could finish it up so it doesn't look like it's...
Yes.
I'll second that.
The only issue is that I think this is a reasonable quote based upon, but Lynn, point of order, do we need to get a second quote on this? So this is a finishing of the first quote. This is a $5,000 expense.
The thing is, you have a partial project. It's not likely they would go out and get a quote.
For someone to come in and finish on someone else's project.
Well, I have no issue with this, and so...
If that would have been on the outset and you were putting it out that way?
Right.
You know, but they didn't discover that, so...
After, after the project got going. So I'm happy because we've got input from the transfer station manager. He said the new solution is acceptable to him, more than acceptable. And overall, I thought the gate was, I saw the fencing, the fencing is absolutely an improvement in the safety, overall safety of the transfer station. So I'm in favor of it too, Bob, so we have consensus to go through this. Let's make it so then. All right, moving on. We've got a, last week's, we've got that already. Again, it's, we have a petition warrant, which we added to our warrants. Thank you to the town clerk for verifying signatures.
And supervisors of the checklist.
Actually, under your tutelage.
Thank you.
Okay. But she initiated the getting it going. Essentially, this is going, we added to the warrant a petition ballot. It's advisory ballot, but it essentially will, we'll read it tonight as we go through the public hearing. But it was a good work by, it was done correctly. All right. We have a minutes of the Concord Regional Solid Waste Recovery Association. Woody, did you get those? The minutes?
Yes. Those are probably the old minutes.
From what?
You just had the meeting last night.
Okay. Well, this is a date, January 29th, the new ones.
The new ones would be last night, February...
I just want to make sure you get a copy of this.
Yes.
Okay, great. We're receiving your quote for the, we're going to make, not make a decision tonight on the repairing the slabbing in the trash box. We have a whole laundry list of stuff we all dress.
Right.
So we're receiving that.
Right.
And then also, the gate, if you haven't known, the gate has been repaired, the front gate. Thank you, Woody, for making that happen quickly. And this is just an idea, just remember Woody is pushing a few issues and he's applying for a grant to get some money for the grant and for the back holes pursuing. Okay, we have, again, a list of repairs, which we're going to put on the agenda. We're going to have to have you come back for those. We'll put that on the agenda. But we're going to have a discussion down the...
Right, I just want to make it...
Get it going.
Not be lagging behind.
You're spot on. I salute you for that.
Woody, one of your vendors was quite a bit cheaper on the two quotes. Can you maybe have him quote some of the other items as well, just so we have a better idea?
I can ask him if he does any, typically a roofer.
Oh, is he? He doesn't do small jobs either?
I can ask him.
Okay. He was substantially cheaper on the roof.
Yeah, he was.
Okay.
Okay. Lynn, you got to help me with this one? Next item is surplus, the surplus, just partner of administrative services, surplus distribution section.
We have filled that out in the past. What it is, the application that we have to complete in order for any town official to go into the surplus estate to shop. We have to set up an account and I have to list the names of town officials that we would allow to go in there. And that was brought to my attention by a firefighter who's looking to pick up a fire type safe or cabinet to store some of their material. Bud stuffed in today.
Okay, so you're going to add names to this, right?
Yeah, but it requires a town...
To make an account first.
To sign off and then I can add all the names.
Okay. Jim, do we have a consensus on sign off? We all three have to sign.
Is it going to be department heads or...?
Mostly, I would think so, I would think.
I would think.
Even town, it doesn't have to be just department heads. It could be, what they're looking for is to have a list of names of...
How would payments be made? Say, chief wants to go buy something. We just get an invoice for it?
Yeah, they bill us.
They bill you? Okay.
So I wouldn't think we'd want anybody but department heads to...
Right. But in his case, he's got volunteer firefighters that would act on his behalf if they're looking for...
But is it safe for their own residents or their...?
No, it's for the town, for the fire department.
It is.
Yep. That's why it was brought. I have, I did fill one of those out many years ago that they might have, might just be looking for updated.
He's a deputy, so it wouldn't be anybody other than that.
Okay. Just make sure that the department...
I can check with the supervisors, see if they re-authorized.
There you go. And he went mining, let's talk to yours.
I just didn't want it to be open to everybody in the town, you know, because we could have a substantial...
Yes. Now, there's some good deals there sometimes.
Where is that located, where they have that?
I don't know.
As you're heading down, is it on the left there?
Yeah, down the street.
Been there many times? It's a, my wife won't let me go there anymore.
No?
Excuse me. It's a, it's an adventure, but sometimes you can, it's a hit or miss. So my wife is saying, it puts me, you can't go today.
Yeah.
It's a miss. It's a miss. I see some people laughing, and they can acknowledge that.
Mike, is it 2020 or 2021?
2020, it's me. That's our term, actually.
I am okay. I thought it was today. And you all messed up. See, you're away already.
Bob, you're in the middle of us two.
It's 2020.
You're 22.
Yep.
2022.
So this is...
320, yeah.
22?
Yeah. Okay. It's time. All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the, we're hearing the municipal budget warrant for 2020. I'm going to do an overview of the budget initially, then I'll go into detail of the budget lines and show where the expenses are and where the increases, decreases. And as we go along through each section, I'm going to allow the public to ask a question. And I'm not going to wait to the very end, but the thing is, if it's on a certain section, let me get through that section, then we'll move by section, because it keeps them uniform. I'll be assisted by my two fellow selectmen as we go along with this. And also, I'm going to open up for the town administrator to give us an assist if I stumble on something. Because I don't think I'm an expert, but I can give it my best shot. Okay. This year, our general theme was, we went with level services, knowing that even if we kept the level services, increases are going to be happening, just because it costs more to do business everywhere, whether it be salaries, whether it be dumping, tipping fees, whether it be anything, if all things go out. But we asked for level services. And I have to salute our department chiefs, they came in with reasonably good budgets and they really identified the things that needed to be fixed, but they weren't going off the deep end. And I appreciate that. Thank you to my department chiefs. We also added a 3% pay raise to town personnel, both elected and town employees. We did that based upon some government statistics and it came to about 2.9...
I'm sure it was 3.1.
3.1. So we went with a 3% across the board for all our town employees. I think that's, we like to do that.
We're trying to match the school.
Which it matches the school. When the school predicted it, they were right. Okay. So I'm going to start, if you go to this, if you go with the, you should have a copy of a single sheet. I'm going to start off by saying, last year, we had a budget of 2.5 million and change. We spent about 2.3 million and change. We had a surplus of $182,000. This new year, we have a new budget of 2.6, 2,000, 2,658,202. It's essentially a 4.46% increase over last year. Last year, we had lapsing revenue of 182,931. We had excess revenue of 155,157. So total lapsing new unassigned fund balance, as we started the year, we had 338,088 of additional funds, which were either surplus or unanticipated. So what, the board selectmen met and we decided initially to apply 111,262 to our budget to offset, to lower the budget and then lower the impact of taxes.
Mike, and on the left, you can see the meeting dates we had there, the 1/23 was the first meeting.
Right.
And 1/30 was the second meeting.
And on the 30th, we looked at the budget and we said, you know, this is taxpayers' money, they have a bunch of warrants. So we're going to apply also to lessen the impact of taxes to the town, we're going to also apply excess revenue to the warrants. I don't find anything contentious about the warrants, but they have to be approved by the legislative body. Yes, sir?
A number of years ago, I believe it was actually Jeff Trexler mentioned it, and the town echoed his sentiments about doing exactly that, taking and putting unassigned fund towards the warrant articles, because it gives it a, how do you say?
No tax impact.
It gives an impression there is no tax impact, but there is a tax impact, because it's money that we've raised or surplus and such that care of. And back in the day, because the town echoed those sentiments that he brought forth at that time, up until now, unaware of, any unassigned fund surplus was supposed to be put towards the actual operating budget and let the warrants stand on their own so people can see the actual tax impact that they would be causing.
We...
Yet you seem to have reversed that this year.
We have talked about that in length, Brian, and what we decided to do was actually show the tax impact on each of the items, but then also show that we voted to apply that surplus to that. Because we had an option of either doing it right at the town meeting and letting the people see where their money is going, or doing it in October and applying it as part of the general budget in October. And we decided we'd like to do it in the beginning part of the year, right at town meeting, so people could see that their tax dollars were going to go towards lowering their taxes right from the get-go, instead of doing it later.
Whether you apply the whole amount to the operating budget or you split it like you just did, it's still the same net...
It's the same net effect, but we wanted to show it right at the town meeting. We talked about that at our, at our meeting and we made the discussion of 1/30 in length. And that's how we chose to do it.
And also showing the tax impact. The legislative body can do what they want to do with the warrant article. They don't have to approve it. Whether or not we approve it, I think makes little difference with the audience that you may have, you know, the night that you do that.
I understand.
Just to show that, you know, we're using money to correct that, that issue. And if they don't spend it, that issue probably, when you look at what the warrant articles are, that issue isn't going away. We're just pushing it further down the road. But they can decide what they want to do that evening. But they can see that there would be no impact, because the monies that we had coming in kind of offset some of that and the surplus money that was left from the budget, so...
Okay, moving on. I hope that answered the question. So the thing is, by applying for warrants, we'll be led up, left with about 29,826. Thing is, out of that, we had, we had, we're starting a new capital reserve fund to, for a police vehicle in the future. We're going to put money of $1,000 of that surplus into that fund. And we're going to also accept $155 from the Gorham Pond residents, they had a yard sale. We accept that money, and it was a donation to the town, but it's revenue to the town. And we have to record that and also in addition, so altogether, that, what lapses into what we have left is 28,671. Our goal as selectmen was to have $25,000 go into our reserve. The state of New Hampshire recommends that we keep about 5%. We approach 5%, we're virtually there. It depends upon how much money we spend every year. We're pretty much on target. The risk to the, if we have a risky town, if we had bonds outstanding and all that, our auditors suggested that we should keep more. But for the town Dunbar, we have no outstanding bonds at the town level. So thing is, there, that our auditors are happy with the amount of money we're keeping and we're meeting state requirements of having a good 5% there. And the thing is, you can call it a rainy day fund, you can call it what you want. We have a burning build down, we have a major emergency in town, we have money we can draw upon. If the school has trouble with budget, we can back up the school if we have to. Thing is, it's money, it's town's money put aside and per the recommendations of the New Hampshire State Department revenue.
And for those of you that weren't here on the meeting on 1/30, to review the police vehicle CRF, we decided to establish that so that the police department would have a, a way to purchase vehicles on a more level field, because they'd be having money applied in there in a certain dollar amount each year, like the fire department does and the highway department and the transfer station does. And that way, we're hoping to level off our taxes instead of having a car every two years or a car every other year or two cars one year. So we're hoping to level that off. The majority of those cars get paid for from the services they do outside of town. And this will just help offset that. So I don't think it'll be a large vehicle CRF, but we wanted to put that in place so that we have that option to keep it more level.
And to carry on with Dave said, it's avoiding the wild swings in the tax rate. And we keep it kind of somewhat level tax rate. Now, then we come back at, police vehicles are not cheap.
It was the only department we saw that didn't have a CRF for their vehicle fund and we wanted to try and initiate that to keep that more level through the years.
Okay. Any more questions? That's the overview. Now I'm going to go into detail by department to give everyone a little more detail, a little more granularity here. So you should have one or two set of sheets, so it's kind of fine print, but it's budgeted up. You can take a look at that. We're going to go through expenses first and then we'll top off revenues.
You going with a big sheet, Mike?
Yes. All right, first department, we have the executive. And it's, the major increases in the department is a 3% payroll, adjustments in employee staffing and financial support. So we ended up with a net decrease for the department going down about $2,500. 2464, 2464 to be exact. I don't find anything unusual with that, but it's decreasing in that one. Now for the election, registration of vital statistics. We have a major increase this year of 8,000, over 88,637. But what's interesting this year, we have four elections. And elections cost money. And versus last year, it was only one election and we have to fund the elections. That's part of our responsibility. And additionally, we had a 3% payroll, that also is included. That's the major increase of that line. No questions, I'm going to move right along. Financial administration. It's increasing, this is a little bit of, it's across the board. We have an increase of 11,802. And also, we have a 3% and a payroll. And the major improvement we're pushing there this year is that we're doing a website improvement. So we budgeted some money for the website. We're going to revamp the town website. It's been kind of difficult to work with. And in today's day and age, websites are a key tool for getting out information. And so we need to do something better. And even the transfer station, I'm going to use a example, Woody. Transfer station would like to put out much more information. And it doesn't have to be filtered through three different people to get out there. There's no reason why he can't be, as a user, get on there and just put out the information. And we want to make it user-friendly for all of our departments. And also in there is a little increase. You might see education, all departments. Our personnel have, in our personnel plan, have an opportunity to improve themselves and we have some tuition assistance. And that's where it increased last year a little bit and we anticipate a few increases this year, so that line went up a little bit. Any questions on that department? Hearing none, and moving on to the assessing department. There's a decrease of 1,266. The decrease in appraisal services, however, the software is also supporting netting that small decrease. Basically, we're happy, decrease, I know, no issues there. Legal, well, legal went up. It's going up a little bit. And the essential reason why it's going up is that we're in a lawsuit with about 190 to 100 towns across the state of New Hampshire. We're being taken to task by the public, by Eversource. Eversource does not agree with the assessments, property assessments on their property. And it's all over the place. We're in a, we're in a, we share the expenses with a group of people, with a group of lawyers who are representing, you know, as I said, 90 to 100 towns. And we don't know which way it's going to go. We're just hoping for the best, but sometimes you don't know. There's some legislative initiatives and, but it's a big unknown, so we're anticipating we'll have some legal expenses there. Any questions on that? Okay, personnel administration. Okay, it's increasing 54,68 this year. But the thing is, the biggest thing is, we added a full-time employee, we added, in 2018, we added a police officer and he was only for a probation year. 2019 was the first year he was there for the whole year. And so we have to account for that. And those are like the social security, federal income taxes and all that kind of stuff. That was to be expected. I have to give, the board also relooked some health insurance issues. They lowered the cost of health insurance issues, but, but we tried to maintain least of benefit for employees, which was reasonably, a reasonable expectation for them. So even though we've got a decrease in healthcare, we still have to pay retirement, social security taxes and the federal government, they have fair share. No questions, I'm moving on. Planning and zoning, it's a small, it's a flat budget, but it decreased about by $30. I have to say, zoning had a quiet year. Planning was a little more active and, but the thing is, I don't see any major increases this year, so they kept the budget essentially flat. Government buildings. Government buildings, we essentially have a 3% payroll increase and a slight increase in heating oil. But those are the major increases. We're keeping, one of the major lines there, you may see the first one, is the town maintenance and building improvement. We didn't expend all the money last year. And that's where some of the unexpended dollars were returned to the, either find it towards taxes, because it is taxpayers' money, we brought it back to taxpayers. We maintain, we decided to maintain that line high, because we have a problem with the library. The problem with the library, the roof rackers still need to be fixed. We alluded to that last year. This year, we had it re-engineered, we have new plans, those are getting ready to be put out for bid and have bidders come in. We have a completely different, sorry, set of plans for that. But the building has to be fixed. It just has, it's a safety issue. We also have the fire department. With the fire department, we thought we got a great deal on a repair job, a very reputable company did a repair job on our fire station. Remember, it's a, the building department and the fire station are two buildings put together. They were never designed that way. There's a, right where the two meet, we have leaks. And the leaks are not necessarily the greatest thing to have there. So we, we thought we got it off cheap this year and it was only a couple thousand dollars. It's a good reputable roofer, he's going to come back and look at it, it still leaks. Am I correct, chief? So again, that's an unknown. So, again, that's an unknown. We have, we have some other expenses. We don't wanna get them, we wanna maintain our buildings. We don't necessarily wanna have to do renovation all the time. But the roof, even at the, the, our town garages, the rolled roof needs to be looked at again. So, we have some issues there that we gotta continue to maintain our buildings. We're even looking at, in front of the library, where we have stair, we have stairs, the concrete stairs in front of the building, they're slanted. We have some water penetration into the building through the basement. They're going the wrong way, and they're crumbling. So, we're gonna look at that this year. So, we have a variety of issues that we wanna maintain our buildings to preserve them for the future. So, that's a major line there. I just wanted to address that, because a lot of people look at that, say, and even the transfer station, you know, it's only for garbage and trash, but if those buildings have to be maintained. All right, any other questions on government buildings?
Yeah, on electric cost there, if this solar ever gets up, will that affect the electrical?
Yeah, the thing is, initially, for the first, for the first four years, where we don't own, and we'll be paying lease payments on it, we'll be buying and paying lease payments. But thing is, well, excuse me, we'll be buying electricity from them at a lower rate.
It's actually a fixed rate for those first four years. Then, once we purchase them, we're gonna start getting the benefit. And we did that because the town is gonna receive that 30% discount that the municipality can't, but we're able to do it through the leasing company.
Right. And the rate we're getting will be significantly, not significantly, but it will always be lower than public, than Eversource. Because which way does Eversource go? Has it ever gone down? More than likely not, and it's gonna go only in one direction, north. And so, the thing is, we're gonna get a relatively fixed price for our electricity off those panels for the first four, I think it's about four years, David, right? And then...
The fifth year that I purchased.
The fifth year, if we like it, we purchase it. We don't like it, we have an option to keep buying cheap electricity for the next 27 years. Excuse me, after four, it'll be 23 years. So, the thing is, then they said they would give it to us. So...
So, looks like these went up, though?
Electricity probably went up, yes. But the thing is, we just don't know, it's, it's a, how can I put it?
We go out all our electricity for 820 dollars a month, and we are spending substantially more than that now. So, it is gonna be a slight saving.
Say it again?
When is it supposed to go live?
Week or two, maybe?
Week or, yeah, they do the final touches. We got an update today, where the building inspector was out there, I mean, this, they need to do a few final touches. I'd say we're 99% there. There's a good 1%, a good 1% of work that needs to be completed before it goes live.
Eversource just did their first inspection, and they pointed out what needed to be addressed. They're almost all corrected, and one Eversource gives it its blessing. And it takes a while, because you have to get on the list, and all the others come out too, so...
And they'll change out our meetings after, our meters on the building will get changed out after that, and so, there's probably a little bit of service time to come and change those out, so...
I'm optimistic that I can report to the legislative body, we're saving dollars.
It would be. So, we've held back on giving any preliminary budgets on savings, and we're hoping to see that before we actually say what our savings are.
It's nice to brag about it, but if we have nothing to show for it, it's like wasting your breath. So, okay. Fire department. Fire department essentially has a flat budget with the exception of personnel. Thing is, we reviewed the method of compensation for the volunteer firefighters.
I think you missed the police.
You missed the police department.
I stand corrected.
Cemeteries?
I stand corrected. Okay, I go back, cemeteries.
No change.
No change, flat budget, okay. Which is great. Insurance.
I was wondering how they overspent.
I'm sorry?
I was wondering how they overspent by a thousand.
They have projects, we augmented some of the projects.
They put a roll there at the other, at the other cemetery. Then they had a cremains garden put in, and the cremains garden had to be a little more than they thought it was gonna be, so...
Where the hell they put it in?
Cremains, what?
It's over here.
It's over here.
They already have one in that cemetery.
No, they put one up in the other cemetery.
There's already one in pages, and one in the side of cemetery.
They're improving, because there was no rhyme or reason to...
Yeah, but they're doing the walkways through, Brian, so people are stepping on them.
The cremains garden's always been there, it's been pre-marked.
Yeah, they're doing the walkways and...
Yeah, they're doing walkways and benches and...
There's this map that shows that there is rhyme and reason.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on cemeteries? Hearing none, and moving on to insurance. Insurance is a great industry, it always goes up. We have a little exposure, it goes up a little bit, and went up contractually, $1,305. Police department. I'll go back to you, Fire Chief, sorry. Police department. They have a, I'm gonna go with, basically, there's a 3% payroll increase, and that's about, it came out about $16,900. And they have the other minor increases, they're about $8,736, and the overall increase of $27,000 and change. A lot of the increase of $8,000 is spread among the various, like computer software, dispatch, it's just the cost of doing business, it goes up. And I could look at that as routine business. It was not an expansion of services, it's just maintaining what they currently do. Go ahead.
Could you explain what's included in the first line item, transfer full-time?
The overtime line? Oh, no, about the very first line.
Full-time salaries.
Yeah, and how many salaries is that?
Five. Any other questions on the police department? Hearing none, moving forward. Fire department, I can do it, I was burning to get to it.
Yeah, really.
But the thing is, we had a very serious discussion during our hearings. We have, we're a small town, we rely upon a volunteer fire department and a volunteer ambulance service. And I'm gonna tell you right now, those days are coming to an end. The first thing we're doing to try to maintain our volunteer fire department is to pay them a little bit more, to make it at least worth their while, because they're getting like pennies on the, on the dollar, for the, for the pennies on the hour for what they're getting for some of these calls. And we're trying to make it worthwhile, so when the volunteer fire department comes in, if it's time away from work, they get paid a little bit more, which would make it worthwhile for them to stay as a volunteer. Now, I'm, I'm not, it's not this budget, but I'm gonna warn the voters that down the road, we have some major decisions to make as a town. We're talking about expanding the ambulance service, having, hiring people to man our ambulances, because we can't, we're having trouble manning them right now. And it's gonna eventually cost, it's gonna be a cost center for us, we're gonna have to pay some serious dollars. And that's, it's not too far away, because this is no longer a small, small town. And some of these people work far away, and the thing is, as volunteers, to be called, you know, you can't wait an hour for an ambulance to swing from the show up. Chief, maybe if I ask you, you could address that with me, help me with that, if we wanna go there?
Sure, yeah. You know, maintaining and running ambulance service is a very difficult service to provide, mostly on a volunteer basis. It's just that, you know, we're getting harder and harder to get volunteers, mostly daytime. Our daytime issue is that there's only about a handful of people available during the day. If everybody's in town, if some person's out of town, we can't get our ambulants out. So, we're relying on our neighbors more than we really should be. We're fortunate the police department responds to medical calls when they're available. You know, they're trained AED and CPR, bleeding, which is, you know, help us with the patients, so, you know, that, that's a plus. But like, like Mike said, the time's coming, and it's coming real soon, that we're gonna have to do something to man that ambulance, especially during the daytime.
Right.
And we're the only community left in Dappel area, or basically southern New Hampshire, that doesn't have an ambulance either staffed during the day, or they have a contract with another community to cover the ambulance. We're kind of wedged right between a lot of big towns that all have, you know, manned ambulance services, some are full-time, some are daytime. So, and as the town grows, our calls increase, those daytime calls are the ones that really hurry to get our ambulance.
And I think our citizens deserve, when they call for an ambulance, not that we wait hours and hours.
Yeah, you can't wait for an ambulance. I mean, we have automatic backup, mutual aid, I mean, somebody's gonna come. But, you know, we need to provide our own service here. We can't depend on that. We had a call Monday, 8:00 in the morning, two of us. We had a call Bo. Bo was here, as soon as Bo got here, they had medical in their town, they couldn't get out for their second call, they had to call City Conkett. City Conkett comes to Bo, Conkett has three calls in a row, they have to call mutual aid, they're just mushrooms.
So, I, right now, this is the first change we're having, just to try to maintain volunteers. And the thing is, there will be more changes down the road, and the thing is, we'll be working closely with the fire chief to kind of configure what we wanna do. But that's, that's up and coming. Any comments on the fire department? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on. Mercy management, we budgeted a thousand. That's essentially, I think, generator maintenance at a community center, is just something we have to do. The thing is, sometimes we budget a thousand, we didn't quite spend that last time, but who can predict what parts are gonna break? Building department, which I skipped over. I could correct it, thank you, gentlemen. Basically, a 3% payroll increase, other than that, it's pretty much flat. Highway department. Highway department, again, came in, flat. Highway department is a challenging department, because I just wanna say, it depends upon what storms we have, it depends on what, how the season goes for paving, there's a variety of factors. I think our road agent's been doing a good job in managing the highway department. He had some extra money come in at the late in the year. We had some extra money come in from the state. We took some of that money, and we actually, we encumbered the money for extra paving for next year. One, by encumbering it, we were able to buy it at a lower price and preserve it for this upcoming year. So, I wanna say kudos to the, to our highway department. Solid waste disposal, hey, it costs more to track, it costs us more to throw away our trash, to include recyclables. And I'm very happy with what, the way it's being managed down there, I give kudos to the management. But we have a solid, we have an increase of payroll and part-time staffing hours due to increased traffic. And what else was increased? It costs more to throw away our trash. The good thing is, I'm gonna talk about a town meeting, the thing is, when it comes to recycling, we have to continue to recycle. And you say, why do you wanna recycle when it costs us money, when we have to pay to haul it off? It's cheaper to pay someone to take our glass and take general trash by a significant amount. So, it still pays to recycle, and we have to really push that point home. People who don't recycle and just throw everything into the trash, well, we all will suffer in the, in the end. And so, they do good, hard work down there, and I appreciate the work they do. All right, welfare. Welfare, it's a flat budget. We essentially, we had a 3% payroll increase. We essentially helped out one family last year, so it's been a quiet year last year. We're gonna keep it as a flat budget. Going on to Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation, that, that, most volunteer committees have basically come to an end. So, we did some shopping mid-year, we did some budget adjustments, we kept some $100 in some of the lines, but we increased, we gave a slight increase to Old Home Day. Old Home Day has been a success for two years in a row, and it continues to be a success. I look forward to that program as a benefit for all of Dunbar. In the past, they used to have excursions to, at Christmas time, to Boston for one busload of people. And that doesn't really, in my opinion, that does not serve the entire community. I thought the Dunbar Old Home Day was a fantastic example of how you can get a program to serve the entire community. So, we'll probably be asking for volunteers as we go forth this year, but that needs to be reinvigorated, if we're gonna do anything with Parks and Recreation. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Well, like the basketball, and softball, and soccer, and all those sort of things, because...
Those are self-funded, Brian.
Well, no, but they're also under the auspices of the Rec Commission. If there's no Rec Commission, then how are we managing those?
I think it's one individual.
There's one individual, we're still, we're trying to get in contact with him, and it hasn't really come to us.
Well, we did, we did leave $200 in there, Brian. The Rec excursions were labeled at $1,300 before, and that was for bus trips to Boston.
I'm just talking about the other things, like, you know, because we do have other, you know, things. You know, well, we're a coach basketball, so, what's going on?
The amount of money that, that aside, it's, as I said, it's, as I said, it's self-funded to a certain degree, in the sense that there's a lot of dollars that's put aside for them already.
Yeah. The checkbook is maintained and held in the treasurer's hands. And where there's nobody to oversee the required expenses, I'm sure that through the selectmen's overview of the payable manifest, they would scrutinize and look at those. It's gonna be difficult to...
There's a significant amount in the checkbook now, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have about $17,000.
$17,000. Go ahead.
Just a question, is the Rec Committee going to be officially dissolved?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time?
Yeah.
It will be...
We just don't have any volunteers.
...so we can update the records.
Yes, not at this time, we don't see it happening. Correct.
We don't have any volunteers right now, so...
And the Mill Foil Committee?
The few volunteers we had resigned, so...
So, we're in a lurch. It's, it's hard these days getting volunteers, but the thing is, we don't wanna dis dissolve committee, because if someone came up with an idea that would benefit a good cross-section of the community, I'd be all in favor of that. I think the bus trips are a nice idea of years ago, but the thing is, I can't see that as a benefit to the whole community. But the thing is, I can be all, I can be talking to something else, though.
One, one thing we did fund is, we funded some Christmas and Easter money for things like the tree lighting, and buying marshmallows and that type of thing, fairly small budgeting, but we funded that this year, so they wouldn't have to...
They have $1,700, not $17,000.
No, in their own checkbook, it's not part of this.
In their own checkbook, they have $17,000 now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's a warrant article about that, so I think it's supposed to be covered by, is it RSA that covers it?
Yep, yep, we're involved in that.
Go ahead, Linda.
During the town meeting, when you're going through this line by line, when you get to the Rec Committee, it might be a good time to plug for volunteers, when you have a really large body of people there. And the same with the Mill Foil warrant article. You'd like it put down to a committee of one.
Yes, so noted, and I think is, I will take that for action. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the Rec? I'm gonna move on to library. They came in and talked to us, and that was a great, they presented their budget, and then they came back to us. They presented, they found they had a little bit too much money, so they said we wanna lower our budget. And the selectman immediately said, thank you. And so, they lowered their budget and to nine, from $104 to $96,228, and we were very happy with that. And so, that's, that's the granularity. So, as I said, if you look at the bottom line, we have budgeted $2,364,009, which is an increase of about 4.2...
No, you're the wrong caller.
I'm sorry?
$2,658.
$2,658, I stand corrected. $2,600,58, $202. 2658202 is what we budgeted, which represents a 4.46% increase. And that, we're gonna use, we're using some of our tax surplus to keep the tax rate low. We applied 112,000, 111,000 towards the budget of last year's money. Do I have any questions on that? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to some of the warrants now.
Revenues, good one.
Uh, revenues, yeah, might be, yeah, sue revenues now. Revenues is another, she should have another, a fine print sheet of revenues. And again, we'll talk about land use change tax first. We lowered that, we're budgeted conservatively of $20,000. We dropped it down to $40,000, because we didn't get that much this past year. Yield taxes, again, we dropped it, we kept it the same. Other taxes, it's, that line has been dropped, but that money is actually put elsewhere in the budget. It's a change in just accounting. We'll talk about that as we go through the pages down the road. Penalties and interest on taxes, we collected more than we budgeted. However, we're not gonna budget, we're gonna, if everyone pays their taxes on time, we get, we don't get any penalties. So, it's always an unknown. License permits and fees, go buy your vehicles, we make money on those. Essentially, we went from $650,000, the actuals, we had $758,000 and change, so we've increased that $25,000. But the thing is, again, everyone buys a new car, we're all, we're all happy, you're paying nice taxes on it. But if we have a downturn in the economy, maybe people won't be so anxious to buy a new car, and that, that line, we don't wanna go crazy on. But Linda would love to collect more taxes for us if she could. Building code permits, we kept that flat, we have $20,000 coming in. Again, we had a little bit more this past year, but we don't know what's gonna come up as far as building. Licenses, and all this variety of licenses, we budgeted, kept it flat. We've got a little bit more at thirteen, it varies. We don't want to over-budget that. We're, as I said, we're being conservative here. FEMA and shared revenue, if you look at that, that's, that's gone up. A little bit, about twenties, it's gone up a little bit. And some of the reasons, last year, we got some money from the governor, about thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's going to continue this year. And so that actually went up. It's a grant from the governor, am I correctly on that?
It's actually twenty-three, four, six, forty-seven, it's second payment.
Second payment. This year, it was unrestricted, but in the sense it was added as a surplus, but next year, it's got to be within our budgets. We have to put it in our budget this year. It's coming. From other departments, a variety of issues, we budgeted sixty, it's the same as last year. We got seventy-seven, but again, you can't over, you don't, never know what it's going to be like, so we're being conservative.
Right.
Carryover, it's hard to see.
Yeah. Sale of property, again, that's a miniscule, we're not budgeting anything like for that. Investments, again, we got, we got a little bit, we got, budgeted only a thousand dollars last year, so we came in with four thousand, so we increased it to three thousand in anticipation of good return on investments. Rents, no change in rents, that's a property near Kimble Pond. We have one property which we're still flipping rent on. I believe the gentleman's grandfathered until he leaves. Other revenues, miscellaneous, we got an insurance dividend this year of eighty-nine hundred dollars. It's what we call holiday credit. When we buy our insurance, it's a shared amount, it's like either the fewer claims, we all get our share in the, so I say, not the profits, but the return, it's a return to us because the fewer claims have been made. And so we did get a little bit this year. So the total of twenty nineteen was collected, we collected one million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy. This year, we, we had an excess of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, which I thought was pretty conservative, but we got a little bit, it's nice to be not in arrears, but be ahead of it. This year, we're budgeting a little bit more than last year, about twenty-one thousand more than last year for increased revenues of one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight. A little bit increase of about twenty-one K, but still, it's, at least this board has worked together. We don't want to overspend our revenues. And if we overspend our revenues, then we're talking about going into our reserves and that's not a good way of being a good fiscal policy. So we're being relatively conservative because some of these things can vary significantly from year to year. Any questions on revenues? All right, hearing none, but move on to the warrants.
The first ones?
Yeah, the first ones are more from the planning board. They're, they're cleaning up their housekeeping, housekeeping regulations by the, as I said, voted by the planning board. We just talked about the town warrant, this is our seven. So as I said, we're talking about a budget of, we're asking for four dollars and forty-six cents a tax rate. Just to let you know, I think last year's tax rate was four dollars and sixty cents, so it's coming down fourteen cents. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of fourteen thousand dollars to be added to the revaluation capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and summarized in the capital improvement plan. The sum to come from unassigned balance. Again, it's a, we're continuing to do a reevaluation. I believe this is the year we do a reevaluation. So we continually pay money to that to pay for that. Article nine, to see if the town will vote and raise an appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars for the statistical property reevaluation and authorize the withdrawal of said funds to come from the reevaluation capital reserve fund for this purpose. No amount of money to come from taxes. Number eight puts money in, number nine takes it out so we can do it. Article ten, to see if the town will vote and raise an appropriate sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing new computer equipment and installation. This article will be non-lapsing for RSA thirty-two, colon, seven. Will not lapse into the town computer and, will not lapse into, until the town computer equipment has been installed or completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, whichever comes first. All right, we have a lot of computers in town. They're operating on a Windows operating system, which is...
Windows Seven.
Windows Seven, and it's, it's been extended for a year, but it's buggy right now. This is not fully being supported by Microsoft. We don't want to do it in carte blanche, so that's why we're giving the town a little bit of time to get those critical computers switched, but eventually, they all have to be switched. Some hardware upgrades are probably anticipated. So it's software and hardware, and that's what this warrant's about. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a backhoe to, to authorize the withdrawal of said funds to come from the transfer station vehicle and equipment capital reserve fund created for this purpose. In an event, this backhoe, why do we get a backhoe for the transfer station? Well, those dippy dumpsters that you dump your trash in can be compacted. That means fewer trips on the road by our truck and we can transport more property, more garbage to the appropriate sites, saving both time and wear on the truck as far as being on the road as much. And it just saves people being away from the transfer station on the road. It was requested by the transfer station manager and the, with the selectman approved of this, and we're not going for a brand-new one, we're going for a used one that works well. And that's, the search is ongoing right now. And the money's coming from a capital reserve, capital, as I said, a capital reserve fund that was created for this purpose. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to be added to the fire department emergency vehicle capital reserve fund previously established, previously established and summarized in the capital improvement plan. This sum is to come from assigned fund surplus balance. I learned that fire department vehicles are not cheap. I heard, I heard quotes of, I thought cheap was just pulling my leg, two hundred thousand plus.
It's cheap, came by an ambulance.
And so we continue to fund that, and I think is, I, that's why we're continuing to support that. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of thirty, fifty-three thousand dollars to purchase a new police cruiser with equipment installation of equipment and to fund this appropriation by withdrawing forty thousand dollars from the police special detail revolving fund, with the remaining thirteen thousand dollars to come from the unassigned fund surplus. All right, what is the police special detail revolving fund? When you go by construction site, you see our guys having a cup of coffee, directing traffic, making sure everything's safe in that areas, we pass that little construction site. Those are special details that we get called upon. Many police departments across the entire state get called upon. We, we set our, we have a certain rate we get reimbursed for. We get some money, official monies for our police officers. We get some money for the vehicles. And we take the money, some of the money we get for the vehicles, and we put it into this fund established for this purpose. And so that's where the majority of this money is coming from, forty thousand dollars from this fund. And that amount can vary whether, if we have a vehicle on site for this, for these details or not. So it's a win-win for the, for the police officer, it's a win for the town, and it's a win for the taxpayers who are saving some dollars. And so we are supporting this and I think it's a good deal that we're doing this. Now, in the future, though, I'm going to talk about the next one. To see if the town will vote and establish a new police vehicle capital reserve fund and to raise an appropriate sum of one thousand dollars to be added to the police vehicle capital reserve fund as summarized in the capital improvement plan. We got to avoid, we, no one likes spikes in taxes. By keeping it level, instead of drawing fourteen, thirteen thousand dollars, say, five years from now, we may have, we will have enough money in there so we can, we draw it from that fund. And hopefully, keep our taxes level, and that's why we're establishing a fund for that. The amount we put in can vary, but the thing is, we're going to start the, start the fund going now. Yes, sir.
Why don't you just modify the special police detail revolving fund so it becomes one and the same? You put your money in from the special detail and your capital reserve, so you only end up with one fund instead of having two funds.
I think we addressed that.
Yeah, it was set up so that it's a special account that's held with the treasurer. And whereas a capital reserve fund has to be held with the trustee of the trust funds. So they're two complete types of funds.
Isn't police special detail also, isn't it in essence a capital reserve fund?
No, it's not by the definition. And the, when it was set up back in, I want to say it was two thousand and eight or seven, it was discussed and it would be held in, with our treasurer. So it's in a separate checking account.
Can the money be spent, can the money be spent out of that without town voting?
Only town voting, it's the same...
Not on the new one, I mean on the, on the existing one.
The special duty fund can only be expended at town meeting. So they both would work the same for expending, but we can collect the, where normally a capital reserve deposit only gets deposited once a year. This one here, we get, we bill weekly, monthly, and that money, when it comes in, gets deposited into that special fund directly.
Could once a year, could the balance that's in the special duty fund get transferred into the capital reserve fund?
Yeah, you'd have to withdraw it this way. You'd have to withdraw it to one fund.
So then you could put it in, and you didn't know exactly what's in it. Right. And it's, parks go to accounting purposes, too. If we get like a check every week, what are we going to do with that check? We have to get a stack of checks and keep them until, until the annual meeting.
We could, yeah.
You could combine it, but you'll always know your balance of both your accounts.
Whereas a police vehicle is restricted to police vehicles, where the other one is, is, could be used for other equipment as...
Vehicle and equipment, so...
There's a little bit of latitude with the police where he wants to, they have to be judicious in what he spends his money on.
Yeah, that's true.
Good question, though. Because I had the same question.
Speaking of that, I thought we had worked to re-modify that to establish new police vehicle and vehicle equipment capital reserve fund. I thought we were supposed to reword that.
I don't recall. Typically, when you're, when you're, like in the previous, when you're asking to purchase something, then as long as it's, so you're saying you want me to add the words and equipment?
Yeah, we have to add vehicle, that can be very...
The reason why is because if they don't do any details on you, we're getting a new vehicle.
Strictly from the capital reserve, we...
Yes, just like Jeff does with his plow on the plow truck.
So, uh, police...
Like we did with his vehicle.
Vehicle, capital, and equipment.
Vehicle and equipment.
I believe we could talk about that as well.
Yeah, I put establish a new veh, police vehicle and vehicle equipment capital reserve fund.
So noted.
Okay.
So I put and vehicle equipment, I think.
So noted, and we'll make a change.
Make a change, yeah.
Interesting, so we don't have to redo it in the future.
Yep.
Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the highway vehicle capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose and as summarized in the capital improvement plan. Yes, we just got a new vehicle, we have a new vehicle in order for the transfer sta, I mean, for the highway garages. However, we want to continue to build that fund. It's not as high as it has been in the past. We lowered it this year because he's getting a brand-new truck. But we still got to keep that fund growing, so when we don't get, five years from now, or ten years from now, whenever we have to replace it, we don't get stuck with a spike in our tax rate.
Another, another reason we lowered that, too, is we're going to be using some funds out of there for his backhoe.
No, no, this is highway department.
Oh, that's highway department, yes.
Okay.
We did lower that one down.
Yes, we did.
Did you put it in his paving account?
No, his paving account is being, is maintained, so...
By reduce this and put more money in the paving account?
We, we did initially, we did some shopping.
Initially, I brought his paving down to ninety thousand and I brought his vehicle appropriations to twenty. And he called up the department head and asked if he could keep it, his paving flat so he could continue paving and reduce his vehicle for this year. And since it only involved his department, we were okay with that.
So you're spot on. It was more of a negotiation with the, with his department.
Same amount of money, just putting two different...
Exactly, exactly. But the thing is, by keeping it in the, in the maintenance line, or so his paving line, he gets the, he has the ability to do more work. We have a great season this year, he can get a lot more paving done this year, which is always a challenge. Okay, articles sixteen, to see if the town will vote and raise a sum of a hundred thousand dollars for the additional costs associated with paving. This is an annual warrant we've been having year after year. It's about the extent, it will pave for what he's doing, and there's additional paving for the town. And this year, we have, just to give you one example. Priorities for paving are usually done by public hearing by the road agent, usually in April, April, May timeframe, where he determines what priorities we've done. After the winter, some priorities can change. For example, Montalona Road was terrible, was terrible. So we had a delay. Railroad, railroad was originally the number one road to be, shall I say, reconfigured, repaved. That took a major delay this year because Montalona, which is much more traveled by residents, was in terrible, terrible shape. And so he didn't finish Montalona, but he put enough on there to get it stabilized and he continued to railroad. And the thing is, a lot is dependent on what the winter does to a road, is dependent upon the weather situation.
And Brian, I did ask him, and once railroad's cleaned up, he does plan of putting the majority of his money down on the Montalona and Morse roads and down in that area, so...
But he had to stabilize it. And the thing is, again, in priorities, the citizens of the, of the town can input, give input, direct input to the road agent at a public hearing in the spring. Okay, moving on. To see if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of twenty-two fifty for the millfoil, I said that correct. Twenty-two fifty, it's a lower amount, it's the lowest we've had in years, for the millfoil control at Gorham Pond and to authorize the selectman to accept a grant from the state of New Hampshire in the amount of nine hundred dollars, known as the Verbal Millfoil Control Grant. In order, and to withdraw one hundred and fifty-five donations. Remember I said that hundred and fifty-five in the budget that the figure was sticking out before? That's worth, that's worth that, donations. And also take it from the unassigned fund balance and to withdraw one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars from the basis plant species capital reserve fund established for this purpose. No amount to come from taxes. So we got a hundred and fifty-five dollars coming from donations from the, at the yard sale, they donated it to the town. That was for the local residents down there. It is so low this year because millfoil was virtually gone. And what's, what are we paying for this year? We're paying for some divers to go in there and reexamine and, and look at it again. We don't anticipate any chemical control this year. If anything, it'll be for divers. And that amount is low, significantly lower than it has been in the past years. Any questions on that? I know it's always been a tough issue. Yes, sir.
We asked the, the gentleman who came, he had a summer house...
From Massachusetts, yeah.
Yeah, who came to present this article. Do you know? I haven't heard from him.
He is going to come and speak, I believe.
No, he's resigned.
He's resigned.
Bob Leonard has taken over, and he's a resident.
Okay, hold on, thank you. I do recall that. We have to ask, when we have none, as I recall, anyone who's non-citizen Dunbar and speak has to have permission from the legislative board. Okay, are we...
What other questions?
Great.
Not about this in particular, but we have quite a number of capital reserve funds. I wonder if it'd be helpful to have a handout that lists the current balances.
It'll be a town report.
Town report.
Okay, they're in the town report, and you'll probably ask them to refer to the page of the town report. Would that be helpful?
Well, will you have, will you have budget handouts?
I, I could print out their report.
I just, I just know some people end up coming to the meeting they don't have.
The town report.
We can make some extra copies for that.
Yeah, it's just a single...
It just might add more clarity as you're going through item after item, referring back to capital reserve fund.
Sure.
Okay.
We take that as a constructive recommendation. Excellent. Eighteen, to see if the town will vote and authorize the selectman to appoint a town welfare director in accordance of RSA forty-one, colon, two. Rather than electing a welfare director, his position would follow the guidelines of the Dunbar Personal Plan and be governed by the selectman. This is one I personally researched with the town clerk. For the past eighteen years, this has been past practice. The Dunbar, the Dunbar welfare director was appointed by the board of selectmen. I could not, normally, in the past, eighteen years ago, it was voted upon similarly the way we vote on the dog, yeah...
Hog reeds.
Hog reeds. However, the thing is, we've had, the selectmen have appointed, have hired people from outside of Dunbar who were not residents here to manage our welfare program. And this has been past practice for eighteen years. And after researching, we could not, I could not find, in the town clerk, we find no example where our town has ever really authorized the selectmen to hire a welfare director. And so we wanted, this is more of a housekeeping type of article, we want to make it official that we can hire. If it's overturned, if they say, the voters say no to this, well, someone can run for it and they can run, we can do it the following year. We might plans to make it as an official position for the next year. However, the thing is, what we did as selectmen, we, we basically put an advertisement out there. We looked for qualifications and just, just the current person we hired has a social degree, a master's in, in social work and is quite versed with dealing with people for this. And that's, that's where I thought the value was, rather than hire someone running for it because, I want to be welfare director, I make X number of dollars, but they have no experience there. We felt we were following past practice and that's why we hired it. But looking back at arrears, well, where was, where was the authorization for this? So going back eighteen years, we could find nothing in the town report with authorize the selectman to do anything like that. So we may have been wrong in the past, but we're trying to do a housekeeping here and clean it up. So, go ahead, sir.
So I do remember, just a while ago, I don't know if it's eighteen years ago, but I remember, yeah, that Brian Little was elected welfare director. So we had elected officials.
Yep.
When I hear that you've been appointing people, what it makes me think is that we've had an open position. No one was elected, and so you had to appoint.
Well, hire.
Well, appoint this.
No, appoint as an intern.
Appoint, yes.
Yeah, effectively hiring them.
Correct.
Yeah, my guess is that, and I looked through the RSA on this, if when you're changing a town physician from an elected physician to an appointed physician, I couldn't find the RSA that identified the process for doing that. Is that... Is that forty-one colon?
It doesn't really do us much.
Yes, yes.
Is that what that one's about?
We consult, that's the RSA for the welfare and her job duties and, and.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So they.
But I'm, I'm talking about a procedural issue.
Yes.
We advised it with town council as to what the best route would be, I can.
But we could forward that to you?
Right, it can be, but it can be deter- it has to be determined by the legislative body. It can't be determined by this group of three, right? And that's why we're, I look at the housekeeping because I think we've been wrong, the town has been wrong along the way.
Unless we did it under what he's saying, where if somebody resigns midway through the.
I think it's been incorrectly, I think you haven't had someone elected.
We have.
And there were, there were times when the position was open.
Okay.
And if someone, if no one runs and no one's elected, then, then it's, it's a coming on the board to fill the position.
Right. But the thing is, where I saw it was, was some errors were made. Thing is, here we are, we appoint, the board appointed people from out of town, which is fine, but thing is, that person can't run for the position. And I didn't see any, any initiative anywhere where the town even attempted to advertise or solicit at the town meeting that this position needed to be filled. And that's where we were wrong. Now, the words, just because we hired someone for one year, where was the following year that we, someone, we brought it up again for vote, and someone ran for it? Was it ever advertised as a position to be filled by vote? No, no, no. And so because of that, I think the town was wrong. And the thing is, I'm not gonna point fingers, but the thing is, we're trying to do better for the town, and I, I feel that, given, we wanna hire a qualified candidate. If the legislative body goes against that, then the following year, we'll keep this as an interim position and put it out there for an elected position if we have to go that route.
Okay, procedurally, it already is an elected position.
Correct.
I believe we have no one running again this year.
Well, Mike says, because nobody probably is aware of it.
Right. So I, no, I see what you, it's almost like catch point two, I see. Now, it could have been advertised this year, is what you're saying.
I, I don't think we advertise for any elected position, do we?
Well, we put them on, on the page and stuff.
No, no, I didn't.
Sometimes we, we try to get the word out that there is no one running.
Well, it's not wrong, it's not elected as a ballot, it's elected at the town meeting, it's a whole different.
No, no. It's elected, it's a, we're on the ballot.
No, but in past practice, it's never been on the ballot.
Do it on the road.
Right.
Oh, no, it has been, three years.
So you can come sign up, so.
Right, and I think Linda pointed out to us that she noticed it wasn't being.
Advertised.
Advertised, or put on the ballot, and she didn't know which avenue to take.
Sorry.
Wasn't being put on the ballot.
No.
It wasn't even put on the ballot for years.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the thing is.
This is cleaning it up.
This is a real housekeeping, this is a housekeeping attempt to clean it up. If our legislative body votes to allow it to be hired by the selectmen who are gravy, if not, I think next year, we have to put it on the ballot and go with it.
It should be on the ballot this year.
To look for that, man.
No, it's not.
It can be brought before, similar to Hogreeves, as it has been done in the past. That's, that's been past practice.
Going back a ways now, but in the past.
But you could even do it on a new business at the end of the meeting.
Welfare director.
Was it on the ballot back in the day?
It was Article one to elect officers at the open meeting.
Okay.
Welfare was, officer was nominated from the floor.
Oh, so that's.
And voted on, on the floor.
You could do it that way.
What year was it in Article?
It was included in Article one.
What year was that?
It's been a while.
It's, it's every year, it's, it's in here now.
Article one. It was done every year up until.
Oh, under Article one.
Maybe six, eight years ago, and then it just stopped.
Oh, I think it's been longer than that.
I'd have to go back.
Yeah.
I go, I go from almost eighteen years where we.
Because we had, we had one welfare director that was appointed to it, and she was the same person for six or seven years.
Okay, so that it was before her time that it stopped, it stopped happening that way.
And then when it was the last one on.
What would, what would be the recommendation from the moderator?
It's not an appointed position, and so it should be on the ballot.
Well, I think, wasn't the question here on the article to change it?
They're trying to change it from an elected position to an appointed position.
To an appointed one.
Yes.
We can still leave that article there, but we can still solicit a vote, we can nominate anyone from the floor and have an election this year, but we can also pursue this article too.
You don't deal with any of your other elected officials, but in that way, it should be on the ballot.
I see what you're saying, I, I think if I got it right, what you're saying is, in Article one, the welfare director should be elected, as we used to do in the past, but then keep this Article eighteen to change that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But the thing is, we're more than that, he's saying Article one, it should be on the ballot.
And I was saying more than that. This is an elected town official?
And how about the assistant?
Those laws are.
No, assistant is.
I was just gonna say Hogreeves, well, that's kind of, that's an honorary position.
Yep.
That's not quite the same.
I don't think there's gonna be a state RSA that, that deals with Hogreeves, it's not anymore.
Well, there's, that email that we got from earlier today.
Well, you just said that you don't have any.
I'll be a question.
All right. I'm gonna ask the town moderator to review the legal opinion we got from New Hampshire Municipal Association. If you review it with us, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Thing is, I'm willing, that can stay on the ballot, but the thing is, is it, is it too late to add a, we, we close?
No, because you do it under Article one.
We can do it under Article one.
Do it under Article one.
But the thing is, it can't be on the ballot this year because it's much too late.
The ballot's a printing?
No, it's not the printing, we have an open season where it closes, you can't apply for.
There's a filing period, so.
Filing period, stop.
It never was on the ballot.
Right.
Right.
But we, yeah, and if, and if there's another position in town where the filing period ends and no one signs up, the position is still on the ballot. You might have write-ins. If no one ran for moderator.
Right.
Moderator would still be on the ballot.
The position, the pos- I have to find out, but this is a.
This is, this is an elected town position, it should be on the ballot.
It is, but it's an optional town position.
Yes, it is, it's an option.
Not, not by the RSA's I found.
Okay.
RSA.
All right, Linda, just point of order, do we have time to put it on a ballot?
No, filing period, I don't.
Just the, just the position, not a person, just a position, no.
But he said under Article one, we can't do it.
From the floor.
It used to be done from the floor, I think, wasn't Margaret Venider like one of the last ones to be nominated from the floor?
Yep, yep. And then.
Can't remember after.
Would the moderator be, be happy with that or support that issue?
I'd be happier with it on the ballot.
I know.
Let me see what, what the town council gave.
Okay, we get back to us, and the thing is, either, either we can defer this for the year again, since, I, I mean eighteen years, we can go one way if we have to. But I wanna, I want, the thing is, my goal is to clean it up.
The RSA one sixty-five indicates that towns will have a welfare director.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what.
It didn't say anything about how they come to be the welfare director.
Correct.
Whether they're elected or appointed.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where Linda pointed it out to us, that it used to be elected, and it wasn't being done currently.
It used to be nominated from the floor, and then somehow the waters got wet and it got nominated.
Well, the thing is, Article eighteen has written, should we keep that in there?
I think you're spinning your wheels here, why, you read what the town council gave you and let, go from there. We're just spinning our wheels here.
Thank you, Leo.
It's not confidential.
However, however, we're gonna clarify, which could happen this year, Article eighteen helps clarify for subsequent years.
Next year. Okay, so Article eighteen will stand and we'll just clarify for this year. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote as authorized by RSA two sixty-one colon one fifty-one alpha, paragraph two, to adopt the notice waiving the fee to be charged for a permit to register one motor vehicle owned by any person who has awarded the Purple Heart Medal or has been honorably discharged, who has been honorably discharged or still in active duty, provided such person has furnished the city or town clerk with satisfactory proof of these circumstances. Some benefit that was being brought forward, that was put forward by the town clerk.
Yeah, and estimate how many people that would be, because there is a tax impact, because it's less fees you're gonna collect.
No, we don't have a tax impact on that.
Why is it just purple?
It's a Brian's question, currently, there are two Purple Heart recipients who registered vehicles in two thousand and nineteen. Tax impact will vary based on whether they drive a clunker or a new Mercedes.
Oh, I understand.
So, the range that I had for two thousand and nineteen was four hundred and twenty dollars for one vehicle, seventy-four dollars for the other vehicle.
So, point zero 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 one cent.
Right, it's.
I don't disagree with the.
That was the cost of the registration.
But we just can't, we can't calculate it in that. With the article of finance, there is a monetary.
There is a monetary cost of tax.
But it's so small.
Albeit, albeit minimal.
Yep, that's good to know.
Okay.
But I could add a hundred, you know, we don't know.
Well, we're not done yet, look at Article twenty. See if the town will vote as authorized for RSA two sixty-one colon one fifty-one dash alpha, paragraph three, to adopt the notice waiving the fee to be charged for a permit to register one motor vehicle owned by any person who survived Pearl Harbor or is honorably dis- or, and was honorably discharged or still provided that such person has furnished the city or town clerk with satisfactory proof of these circumstances.
You said typo there.
We got a ton of those.
You're missing on active duty, or is still, comma, should be on active duty.
Lynn, do you have that?
Still on.
It's still on.
This, I just highlighted what you gave.
I would like to see that, though, to be honest with you, because Pearl Harbor, seventy-five years ago.
I don't think you're gonna fuck with too many.
No, not, 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 not sure anyone.
Is that what should be there, though, and still?
So give them.
Or still on active duty, or is it still on active duty, comma.
So noted, correction we made.
No, give me a second. I mean, I gave you a copy of the full RSA two sixty-one, one fifty-seven, and the active duty pertained to Pearl Harbor, but it was not included in Section three for Pearl Harbor survivors.
I just highlighted copied and placed, so whatever you meant in those two, two articles.
Oh.
It would be so corrected.
So.
It will be taken care of, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Okay, and Article twenty-one, New Hampshire Resolution for Fair Redistricting, this is an advisory article only. It's by petition of, it's a petition article, by petition of twenty-five or more eligible voters of the town of Dunbar to see if the town will urge that the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to redraw the maps of political districts within the state following the twenty-twenty sentence, will do so in a manner that ensures fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters. That in order to fulfill this obligation, the New Hampshire General Court shall appoint an independent redistricting commission that draws the new district maps in a way that does not rely upon partisan data such as election results or party registration or favorite political parties or candidates. The record of this vote approving the article shall be transmitted by written notice from the selectmen to the town, to the town of Dunbar and state legislatures and to the governor of New Hampshire informing of them with instructions from their constituents within thirty days of the vote. This is just a, we have a, I interpret this as, yes, we have a census coming up, it makes sense, this is a common sense issue, and I have no issue with that, I think it's a good thing. And I thank you, I thank the, those twenty-five Dunbar voters who put this article forward, I think it's a good idea. From Josh Allen, yes, sir.
And I assume that the, one of the petitioners will be moving the article?
I hope so, I haven't, I haven't asked the, one of the petitioners yet. I, if, if they don't move the article, I think the selectmen may, we're gonna decide that tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Bob do it, he likes doing things like that for me.
I'm pretty sure I know who's gonna.
Okay. Okay, and then last thing, number twenty-two, to hear, the reports, agents, auditors, and committees and other officers here to have chosen to pass any voting related to anything, last transactions we have, and last of twenty-three, to transact any business that may legally come before this meeting. And then the, the moderator will say, go home. Any questions on their warrants? I hope I went them, went them well enough, it was a good discussion, I'd like to give back some feedback if you need the legal opinion, I appreciate that. Any last comments or questions?
You over-stated the tax impact on these, right?
They had tax impact right now, we, what I wanted to do, Leo, is have a handout at the door showing on the line items that would have had a.
A lot of people don't bother with those handouts. You gotta walk to each person and give them one if you want.
I'm gonna ask the moderator if.
If, if, if anything, I can at least address the tax impact, what it would be by percentage checking, as we, as we go.
That'd probably be the easiest, that way we share each one.
You guys are handout.
Because I, I, yeah, I run the, the rest, the thing is, my concern as we were discussing this, I still wanted to put it on the warrant, but I couldn't. Because I wanted to make indifference to what Mr. Pike said, it's nice to know what the, what the tax impact, regardless of who's paying for it, what's the tax impact to citizens of our.
Right, would be.
Would be, even though we take it out of, it's still their dollars.
I do think if we did have a handout there, we can always say, you know, we do have handouts, if you want to go grab one, we'll call.
Yeah, we end up with all kinds of confetti on the floor.
I would take that as a constructive recommendation, and when we talk warrants, we're just gonna talk the warrants, we'll make sure they talk about the tax impact individually for each warrant.
Yeah.
Well, if we have a blizzard, you have a plan?
Yes, we do, the town moderator will make a decision. It's his call, it's his call, and the thing is, and the thing is, we've always supported him, and I think it's worked out well, where he continues the voting and he postpones the town meeting to the Saturday following.
I actually had no choice about that, I will though this year.
Yes, and so we deferred to the town moderator.
They addressed it, right, since then?
What's that?
Since then, they've addressed it, right?
Yeah, so that we could postpone voting and town meeting to a date two weeks later. But this would make the third March blizzard in a row if it happens again.
Give it luck.
As some form of benefit.
Give it luck.
But the thing is, if we have a problem with the town meetings, no, we'll hand moderator.
Never had that with Fred.
No.
Didn't you say, didn't the Russians come in during a blizzard?
Yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, any other, any other questions before I close this public hearing? All right, hearing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and thank you for your input, we, I got some value-added suggestions, I'm gonna go with them. And, and we still have to figure out, just the logistics, how we're gonna address the welfare director, thank you, moderator. Okay. No, we still have a few more issues to discuss, we're not quite done, if you want to stick around, you bump into it? Almost done, yeah. Well, I can open the public.
Yeah, see, I don't, I could, I.
We discussed it.
But I think Lee will.
You can't show it. That is just a great idea.
So, Lee, on our coffee?
Yeah.
On just the lines that are the best.
Right, because there's some that, um, got reserved.
Okay, kidding, okay. We're gonna continue on with the, with the business, I entered the mailbox, so I'm good with the mailbox, however, I do have some, the town moderator wanted to speak to us about upcoming election, and so I'm gonna give the floor to you, sir, are you ready?
Okay. So, we've already talked informally about getting the space at the community center set up.
Yeah.
On the tenth.
Yes.
We've done that in the past year, starting at four.
We have, we have a crew of two coming in.
Okay.
Confirmed. And they have three, they have three hours, they have a good three hour window to get it done.
And I think that'll be more than enough, I, so I plan, I plan to get there at four. We had a request for someone to set up a table that is unusual, those requests usually come from town groups or town individuals. This one came from a teacher at Bull Memorial School. It's a, it's a funny thing, you know, the, the voting day at the community center, who's got authority over that space? Who's responsible for that space? It's, there's overlap all over the place between you guys, the school, who usually does the scheduling, the school board who oversees that, and me, because it's, for that one day, I'm responsible for the space. So, it was, it was, I've been talking to this teacher, and it's been an interesting exchange, getting me to be sharp about, well, what really is okay? What, what it comes down to is, the group that, from the school that wants to do this is a service club. And it turns out, some of the students in the club are Dunbaran students, so they are gonna make the request. So we're getting a request to use a little portion of our community center from town residents.
And what the purpose?
Yeah, they're gonna raise money in a bake sale, and they had a list of four different charities that they're gonna give the money to.
I, I believe we've had, as I recall through the years, that we've had charities set up there before, it used to be, I think the teachers, not the teachers, but the parent teacher, PT.
Yeah.
PT was up there.
Yep. The difference this time was, at, at the start, it was an out of town group.
Right.
And at the start, it looked like they were gonna do it to bake, to raise money, I didn't know about the charities until later in the conversation. This is more of an FYI.
Okay.
I feel confident being able to explain to anybody in town why we're letting them do it, if the request came from town residents, you know they're minors, and the purpose of it is not to raise money for any individuals, but for charity. That fits right in with the. That fits right in with the policies and procedures we've got for the use of the center.
And I think the person setting up can take that and get a table for them, and maybe a couple of chairs too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll plan that out.
I have, I, thank you for the informed information.
Are you planning to come?
Yes.
On the tenth?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing I've got is something that we've.
But you don't want us anymore.
Of course. Now, I would never say that.
Wait till March for that, dude.
Lynn and I have been talking about being ready for the election. Four years ago, at the presidential primary, seventy percent of registered voters came out to vote. If we get that again, we'll be somewhere between fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred. It's hard to predict these things, but we're gonna use that number to try to be safe for the day. Fourteen to fifteen hundred voters, we're probably gonna need two tables of ballot clerks through most, if not all, of the day. That's what it looks like, that's a lot of ballot clerks. So we looked at our regular volunteers for that, and we're short.
We have six appointed ballot clerks. We'll need eight for the day in order to have each ballot clerk work from either seven to one or one to seven, we've got them split up in shifts before ballot clerks working at a time. So we're, we're a little bit short, someone called today and volunteered her service, which is great.
Great.
But she's not seasoned, and that's the other problem, it's great to be able to put a body in there, but we need somebody with some knowledge of how the system works, and I'm sure you folks all watched all of those webinars that the Secretary of State's office keeps sending us, so you know how to do all of it. So what we're, we're looking at is probably using the election officials as fillers for the ballot clerks. At some time, we're just not gonna have a choice. We just, we can't throw somebody in there who has no election experience.
We can't have both people at one table.
Well, the thing is, the role, the role we've had, we have a variety of roles, we, we fill in where it's really needed.
I think it has. And it's been good to rotate everybody, so you all get a feel for it.
Yeah, that's, that's been, we, that's a past practice, we've done that before, I don't see an issue with that.
Good.
We're not gonna be sitting around doing this.
I think there may be parts of the day that are less busy.
Sure.
And at those times, we might be able to move to just one table for a while, if we need to.
I don't know if we'll just be able to, we'd have, then we'd have.
There's two books.
There's two books.
Yeah, so whoever did it, we have to be really sharp.
They can't be alone, we have to have two people on a book, we can't just have one person handing out ballots though.
No, 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 I'm saying not two tables.
Oh, not two tables.
For some parts of the day.
Okay, guys, we gotta go on to our meeting.
Um, but, but it's kind of a heads up that we're probably gonna tap.
Have we put it on hot topics?
What?
Have we put it on hot topics?
We can't really advertise for somebody who's, has no experience, it would be great to have somebody come in, but right now, our, our seasoned clerks, we don't have enough.
They're never gonna get seasoned if we don't let them come in.
This is not something they practice on without somebody sitting beside them who knows what they're doing.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, we're never gonna have people seasoned if we don't let somebody sit in.
So you guys are seasoned, so.
We've been doing, we've been doing that. It's, it's a funny procedure on this, the way that we're supposed to pick ballot clerks is that each political party is supposed to nominate three election observers that can be used in a variety of ways, but then the moderator is supposed to appoint.
If the political parties don't appoint, then it's up to.
No, 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 I went back and read the RSA, I'm supposed to pick from them.
Right, you're supposed to pick from them.
From the nomination of the parties, I recall.
Right, and we've, the Democratic Party, actually, they nominated three, but it turned out there were only two who were willing to do it. And we have not heard from the Republican Party. In the absence of those people being nominated as election observers, then it's, it's up to us to make it work in whatever way that we can. Ideally, we have a Democrat and a Republican at each table that we set up. So that's the goal we're trying to get to, but when we're short like this, it's, it's concerning.
So we're bottom line, we're just checking to make sure that we'd be able to tap your resources, you know, and use your ballot clerks.
Well, we've done in the past, I don't see why we can't do it again.
Perfect, thank you.
The part, part of the heads up is also that in some of the elections in the past, there really hasn't been a lot of work, and I know that there are times when you leave for part of the day, and that's been fine. If we get the turnout that we're anticipating, that might be more difficult this time. If we need one of you as a ballot clerk and another one.
How bad do you want us to know?
We can't do anything with the election.
I like it when we get a lot of people come, that's the point.
No, it's, it's good, okay, okay, thank you for the heads up though, we gotta, we'll be there with you.
I don't have anything.
That's all I've got too.
Okay.
Um, there, there's some, you know, every time we have an election, there's that anticipated, what's the hot issue gonna be? I don't think we've got a really hot issue this year, but I can bring you all up to speed on the eleventh in the morning.
The, the only thing is ballot counters, just make sure, we gotta make sure we recruit some ballot counters.
Yeah.
Everybody's welcome to recruit ballot counters, so absolutely.
Because you know, the ballots with so many people on the ballots, and it's gonna be a challenge.
But it's only one race.
That's true.
It's only one race.
But fourteen hundred is still fourteen hundred.
But if you folks do recruit anybody, please let us know, because we try to keep a running list of what to expect.
Right, and in fact, sometimes some people will volunteer as they come through the line too.
We try that, yeah.
So, so about that, the ideal is to have two people at each table counting ballots. One of them a Democrat, the other a Republican, sometimes it's one of them a Republican, independent, and somebody for one of, one of them, the parties. So that, that again is the ideal, the thing I'd like to throw in is, I think it's good for us to have younger voters to become part of the process through becoming a ballot counter. So as it stands now, we've got eight.
Maybe ten people have signed up.
And how many of them are from the Democratic Party?
Mostly Democrats.
So if you're gonna recruit somebody, we're looking for Republicans.
Okay.
But we'll take them anyway.
Okay. A volunteer chief, volunteer chief to be there with you.
It's gonna be busy otherwise.
He did it for years.
I'm gonna enroll, but I'm still not ready. Okay, okay, any else, sir?
That's all.
We'll see you next week, and Woody, use your point of contact with the, for the logistical support. Woody, I may ask you another favor afterwards, please check with me before you come up. We may use your truck, the new truck, to help transport, Linda's, Linda's got a boatload of stuff needs to be there. We've been using private vehicles, I think it would be appropriate, we can use a nice new pickup truck.
Thank you, fine with me.
Okay, would you be coordinating with Linda when you, she, come up with her, you can come up, you can come up at three-thirty if you want it to, or as early as, it's up to you. Would you do work together, and she'll tell you when she's ready for you to pick up?
I'll check with her after.
Please, okay?
Thank you.
I wanna do that ahead of time, not, not to wait on that.
And you'll email me the.
Legal?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a sticky issue, I wanna get.
So it's really clear what we're trying to do.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna clean that up, I really do.
Yeah.
I work hard with Linda this past year, we went through town report at the town report together, and we had a tough time finding much about it.
Yeah.
It was a challenge.
Yeah.
You don't really find when it stopped happening.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, again, I'm gonna open up for, it's still public comment, I'm gonna go back road, Mr. Lee Martel.
Okay, I think you answered my question in the course of the day, and I, you got in touch, you finally got in touch with the contractor about the complex.
Yeah.
Take the complex, and he's got back to you?
Please.
Uh, nope, he hasn't gotten back to me. I reached out to him again, sent the email I sent him in December, and I haven't heard.
Oh, okay, I thought earlier I heard someone say, Mike said that, and they were gonna come back and look.
No, they need to come back.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
No, I, I did not have any, I didn't, I didn't have any.
Well, I assure you, he really, he really wants to, you know, take care of this.
I think, you know who he did reach out to was John Wiganow, he spoke to Johnson.
I told him to talk to John.
Right, but this gentleman called John directly.
Yeah, I told him to talk to John.
Yeah.
So, okay, I just wanted to.
I've called that a work in progress, but the thing is, you know, if we have to put more money towards it, we get, we have to find out exactly why it's leaking.
Right.
And then address it on there.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure that, because when I spoke with him, he was, he assured me he really wanted to.
Make it right?
Try to make it right, but he said he really didn't know what else he could do, but he would try to make it right, he'd work at it.
Okay, that's all we can ask, okay, last role.
Earlier, you said something about commending a contract for five thousand dollars, is that contract from last fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
And how would you be able to take and add five thousand to it from this fiscal year until the money's appropriate after March? Technically, you can't, because all you can do is maintenance budget until town, until the town.
Point of order, so the thing is to march it.
Yeah, you gotta wait till March until the town improves the budget.
Point of order, that's, that's good, good, good pickup, thank you. Chief. Okay, back to the board, Dave.
I think we've answered everything through the night already.
Okay, and Bob, do you?
I'm on, sir.
Okay, in that town.
We are gonna do the vote, right?
Yes, we are. All right, I'm just gonna be signing some duties to my selectmen here. Me and myself, okay, I'm gonna let the, anyone from the main board, you're gonna speak to these, these ballot articles?
No, that's done before, we open up town meeting, we start, we start with Article seven, and the moderator will speak to that.
Is one of them boosting?
Although the boot articles?
Yes.
Okay, okay, then Article seven will be the, the main one.
As we go through, could you give us what the tax impact is again?
Yep, yep, I will.
Yeah, that way I can, we have a talk to him.
They're on yours.
Or whoever, whoever takes it.
They're on your summary sheet here, but we can do, we can do, I can just have you write them right in there.
So Mike.
I, I'll do the main one, Article seven, with an assist from you two gentlemen, like we did before tonight. If I start stumbling or anything like that, I, I'll look for you for augmented support, I didn't punch you this kid, slow you down. No, I didn't wanna waste, these peoples have time to speak.
Do we wanna vote on these independently?
Yes, we do. So Article seven, I'd say recommended by the Board of Selectmen, I'll say yay. Oh, I'm sorry, Article seven?
Yay for me.
Okay, that's three-zero. Article eight?
Yep.
So I'd like to assign this to.
This could probably be Mary Levalle, one of the assessors.
But we always have a backup.
Do you wanna do the backup of those first two there?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, sure.
So Bob's backup. Okay, I'd like to vote on Article eight. Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
I'll go, yes.
Okay, three zip, Article nine?
One second. That is a four cent impact, if you wanna note that.
Okay, okay, good. Article nine, impact, that's really nothing, zero, because it's taking money from capital improvements, okay? Kaminsky, yes on Article nine?
Yes.
Dave?
On yes.
Okay, three zip, Article ten?
That's a six cent impact.
Six cents, and this is for computer equipment, I'll, I'll speak to that, I'll have, as backup for me, I'm gonna have Lean come on.
I'll have to be given permission, because I'm not.
But your backup in case I need it.
But I'm not a registered voter, so.
Right, so I'll ask.
You should be okay.
I should be okay on that.
Yeah.
You could talk him to death on that one.
Oh, I can. All right, Article eleven, vote is like, yes, Bob?
Article eleven.
Ten.
No, ten was, yes, three.
Yes, three zero.
I'll do the, I'll do Article eleven.
Okay, Woody's backup.
And that's.
Dave, Woody.
Okay, so if there's any questions.
You come right up to the podium, Woody.
Actually, it should be probably the reversed, it has been in the past when the department asks for something.
Woody's gonna come up and then I'll back up.
He will speak and you back up.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So you got that? Okay, tax impact?
Zero.
Should be zero.
Three zip?
Yep.
Gentlemen, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, three?
Yes.
Okay, twelve is a fire department, this fire chief.
Yep, he'll speak on that, and the backup selectmen.
Bob, you wanna do that one? Fire, okay.
You know, here's a scenario, chief gets called up to a call.
Right.
And the thing is, I wanna continue on with that.
Impact?
Uh, thirteen cents.
Thirteen cents, and vote, Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
Dave, and twelve, okay, good, Article thirteen, it's a, chief, chief, you wanna speak to that?
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'm not a speaker.
Sergeant Ramon, you got it?
He's not a town resident, so he can get permission.
Permission, you got it?
So I will let the moderator know that you will be speaking on this, and he would, he'll ask the floor for permission.
I'll, I'll be the, I'll be the back, but Dave, you wanna be the backup there?
I can.
Yep, okay, Dave will be the backup.
And the tax.
Thing is, I just wanna make sure, you know, we had a discussion tonight, a discussion about why can't you combine the two, we had the discussion when we were talking about it. And they're two different things, and I wanna be able to.
We had a lot of these discussions on the appropriate days.
Well, you know, another point is that if the monies are drawn from that special.
Right.
And it's not enough to pay for each other here.
Then we choose a smaller balance.
Then you don't have enough money, you just can't do it, so you have to, you could draw from that.
Right.
Yep.
What, what is the, the tax impact on thirteen?
Four cents.
Four cents. Okay, Kaminsky, yes on that one?
No, just.
Okay, and number fourteen is a, is a, is a one thousand dollar one.
Mike, I'll speak to that, because I don't wanna ask to set that.
Okay, just remember that we gotta do a word change on that.
Yep, I'm gonna take that vehicle and equipment.
Tax, tax impact on that.
Chris, do you wanna speak to number fourteen as well, because that's the vehicle fund? I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the backup for it, but if you wanna speak.
The whole purpose of the fund is to only have spikes in, in tax rates.
Right, right, I just don't wanna set on the chief's stuff.
No, I'm sorry.
I would like him to. Since we're already putting him up there.
Sure.
And if, if you want me to speak first to it, or whatever you guys wanna do, just let me know.
Okay, tax impact of a thousand?
Zero.
Zero. Okay, Kaminsky was yes, so you quit.
No, just.
Artel, yes.
Yeah, fifteen, highway, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put the road agent.
Yep.
And me, I'll do the backup on the two road agent ones if you want.
Okay. And that's the second one to road agent.
And so the fifteen is a three cent impact?
Three cents, got it.
And the sixteen, Bob, we gotta vote on that?
Fifteen, Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
Martel, yes.
Okay, three zip, sixteen, Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
Martel, yes.
Okay, that's the hundred thousand impact, tax impact?
Fourteen.
Thirty-two cents.
Thirty-two cents.
Thirty-two. That makes Dave a no.
Okay, one seventeen now.
Uh, that will probably be Bob Leonard, and any backup selectmen?
I can be a backup for that one.
Okay. I remember they're just diving, Mike.
I'm sorry?
They're just diving.
Just diving.
And that is a zero impact, because it's coming from the invasion species.
Kaminsky, yes on that one?
No, just.
Artel, yes.
Okay, eighteen. Eighteen, we're still gonna go through that one, whenever we decide, we're still gonna go through that for the future.
No, just.
Kaminsky was yes, that's the welfare director, Bob, there you go.
Yeah, I put you on that one, Mike, to speak to it.
Yeah, I don't wanna go on the other one.
So Mike is gonna speak on?
I wrote my own, I did a good job.
Artel, yes.
Well, the thing is, Lynn, Lynn, I actually went back through the town report, and we found crap, there was nothing to find.
That's why I wrote your name by, because you had the.
It was, this was a total mishmash, and the welfare director we had at the very end didn't even report to the previous boards before I became on the board, and didn't come to us to give us any information, and.
She wasn't from town.
Kind of vanished, and so we kind of appointed someone to do the term without knowing what we're supposed to be doing.
And she was out from out of town.
Right.
Yeah, so that's common, that they, towns would use.
Not elected officials, though.
That's correct, yeah.[1691.81] That's correct, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so...
But, but she was, I think she was appointed way back, so it just carried through. So we don't know, do we elect them or win them?
She lived in town at the time, when she was appointed.
Did she?
But then the one before her came from Manchester and lived in Ware.
We're talking about Debbie, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, before her was Donna Muse, and she lived in Ware, so it's been going on for a long time.
It's just been no accountability.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mike, Mike, you're good with that?
Yeah, I agree.
And there's no impact on that.
Okay, and nineteen, or, please, where we go to nineteen, Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
Artel, yes.
Twenty?
Are we gonna do Bob on that one?
Bob, you can talk to that.
Okay.
Housekeeping.
You do twenty-two, Bob, but kind of the same thing?
Twenty, I mean, yeah, twenty.
Nineteen and twenty, so Bob.
I'll be a backup for Bob. And twenty-one, how do we wanna do twenty-one, despite petition? We should, whoever sent the petition should talk to it.
Yeah, I'd put you down as a backup.
I think it's in your basket, and you can see the names on the petition, maybe you can snag a name or two from there.
Absolutely.
I seen you stumbling through reading that, and I said, I don't wanna read that one.
I think somebody that we know that's town official.
Matt Sullivan? Matt Sullivan's number one.
I think I saw the...
Don Larson?
Yeah.
What he's on topic?
Peter Weeks, too. Well, I'll speak to, no one speaks to it, I can just bring it up.
Find out from Bob Jarnes, if he wants to speak on it.
I don't know who that is.
Okay, well...
Maybe just ask Don and see what he has.
He is one of the people that instituted the petitions.
Okay.
Bob, do you know him? Do you wanna call him and ask?
Yeah, you can find out from Bob.
We have Bob for him?
Yeah, I can be a backup for that one. Just, I was probably, I was just gonna read it, I mean, well, let's hold on. Kaminsky, yes?
No, just.
Artel, yes.
I mean, it's, it's just an affirmation of our support to be fair and honest in the deliberation of the State House. We don't wanna hang any words. And I say that because, the thing is, it's a, it's a non, non...
Non-binary, yeah.
Twenty-two and twenty-three, I'm just gonna read it.
Mike and Mike?
Yep. Well, we don't have to read Michael twenty-two, if there's no other business. There's one thing we say at the end, what's the last thing we say at the end? There's always something I say at the end.
Yep, they have to change the language. I'll have it ready. You're gonna be the speaker?
Yeah.
I'll get it for you. It's the accepted town report with errors and omissions.
Right. I knew there was something I was missing. Okay, are we good there? All right, anything else we got? Any input tonight?
Do you have anything to say about this tonight?
We're gonna wait till next week. Essentially, just, Lynn got some information together, it's good information, but the thing is, what we have to do is decide how we're gonna embrace this. Just remember, one of the suggestions from Legal was, when we solicit information came through the town clerk's office, we'd have to do by mailing. Mailing is gonna be $1,500.
Forget it.
I'm sorry?
Forget it.
That's what I'm thinking. We could do, we could ask at a show of hands from the town, if they just, as an information only, put in this last item, say, just... Are we interested?
If you bring it up that way, you say that we were advised not to have it publicly displayed at our vehicle registration counter, so therefore, to mail it out, it's gonna cost $1,500 to get a survey of the general public or the residents.
Right. To be a non-binding vote of support for it.
Yeah.
Would that be acceptable to you guys?
What is that on?
On this year, in other words, we wanna, there's three categories of veterans. We have the wartime, we have the wartime veterans, disabled veterans, and the veterans who are non-wartime. And the thing is, the gentleman came in, wanted to expand the tax credit to, or establish a tax credit to...
He just wants to amend this, I thought.
Right, no, but it's a different, amend it so they're included in the, the non-wartime veterans are included.
I misunderstood that. I thought he just wanted to increase...
No, he wanted the...
All veterans.
He wanted all veterans.
He wanted all veterans, all that?
All veterans, even if you were in for two months.
I don't think we should put that on the warrant article at all.
No, but you can speak to it at the end.
At the town meeting, just for a show of hands.
Show of hands.
Yeah, but by the time you do that, it's almost empty.
Yeah.
There's only gonna be sixteen people voting on it.
Yeah, so I still think we're kind of in the preliminary stages of it.
All right, that's why I wanna think about it, and we'll come back and discuss it in a week or two. All right, fair enough. Think about how we wanna address it, but just remember...
You know, the fellow that came in, you know, you left it to him also to do some research.
And he did provide us with it. It was in the mail basket of the selectmen.
This one's here.
Right, but my, my point is, you guys said you were gonna revisit this next year after doing the research and trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Now you're trying to crunch it into...
Oh, no, no, we're not gonna do anything with it, we just wanna get some flavor for where the town is on that. And then, the thing is, the one thing that's hard to predict is the tax impact.
You can't get the flavor out of just a handful of people, though, at meeting.
And I'd ask, I'd ask, if you remember Leo, I didn't think it was right that we put it on our town clerk's desk, and they came back and said they didn't think that was appropriate.
And so we're trying to figure out a way...
There's gotta be another way to find out. How many, what the impact would be, is what you wanna know right away, you know?
And the thing is, it might be better to do a quick mail, or like Lynn suggested, $1,500 would be at one time.
Yeah, that's a lot of money, though.
It's fifteen hundred.
We're thinking about it, it's an option on the day.
Onlook, that times the...
Eight hundred, I'll drive him around.
How about your handout at the door, Dave?
I can just put him with that.
I think he did say that we could hand something out with a return postage stamp, but then again, you only get a small, if you don't have a big turnout, then you get the true...
And the thing is, if three hundred residents show up for the, for the town meeting, which is not unusual, three hundred is a lot.
Yeah.
What if you had something to hand it out at the town meeting and have the school board meeting?
The school board meeting is even less...
School board meeting, we had two residents.
Yeah, it's gonna be dead this year, too.
Well, it's public, you know, okay. But we'll talk about it next week, it's still a work in progress. We gotta figure out an idea, but $1,500 was the first estimate based upon if we mail them. Because I was hoping we could get one of those ones that you don't charge, you know, you don't charge them, too, they mail them.
You know, the bad part with that, too, is a lot of people are gonna see that and say, it doesn't affect me. You just spent money for nothing.
Exactly. Okay, so you, Lynn, anything else for you? Okay, gentlemen, I'm waiting for a motion if we don't have anything else. Do we have anything else? Am I missing a motion?
Motion for non-public, Mike.
Okay, gentlemen, we're gonna go with the non-public, so we'll shut down in a very...